Okay, let's, good morning. This is the Tuesday, October 11th meeting of the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners. My name is Deb Shore, serving as Chair this year. To my left is our Vice Chair Kristi Yocum, Commissioner Rick Vest on the end, and to the other side, fellow Commissioners Roma Amundson and Sean Flowerday. If you'd please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Mr. Clerk, if you'd begin the agenda, please.
The copy of the Nebraska Opening Meetings Act is located on the wall of the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, all written material to be discussed in today's open meeting is available for electronic viewing from county clerk staff. Printing options are available on request. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Ten ninety-one are minutes, approving the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on October 4th, 2022.
Move approval?
Second.
Motion is second to approve the minutes of October 4th. Call the roll, please.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Next is claims. First claim is approval of the claims processed through October 11th, 2022. This needs to be amended to include the payroll ending on October 5th, 2022.
Is there a motion to approve the claims with the addition of payroll through October 5th?
I move that we approve the claims with the addition of the payroll through October 5th, 2022.
Second? Call the roll, please.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Next is approval claim to the City of Lincoln Information Services in amount of $22,013.46.
Move approval. Well, are we going to hear about this? Do we have someone here?
Commissioners, this was a, this was a claim that was passed in 90 days. It was from Information Services. There was a piece of equipment that was purchased for risk management. I think it got stuck in the warehouse and they did not want to pay the claim until they actually received that piece of equipment.
I, I'll move approval.
I'll second. Call the roll, please.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Next is number three, Special Presentation. This is Commissioners' Award of Excellence for August 2022 to Tracy Dragoo County Engineering in the category of Productivity.
All right. We do have a nomination to read in the record. If you'd want to begin with that, please. Come on up. This is you. Yeah.
This is my first time. I don't know.
Not your last, though, right?
Tracy Dragoo has been selected as Commissioners' Award of Excellence winner for August 2022. She has worked as an administrative service officer for the Lancaster County Engineers' Office since February 24th, 2020. She was nominated by Matthew Taylor in the category of Productivity. In his nomination, Taylor states, "Our department had no social media presence. We had 42 followers on Facebook that were only utilized for road closure information." Tracy took it upon herself to create a business plan for social media engagement and what that, and that, and what that would entail. She did a Facebook and Twitter facelift. She made it a goal to get 1,000 Facebook followers in one year. She created a segment called Reverse Engineering on TikTok and is using it as a platform to educate and inform people on what the county engineering department does, what we struggle with, our success, highlight our team members, and inform safety concerns. Tracy has hit her goal with a few weeks to spare and had the informative survey video go viral. It was awesome to see, and it rewarded all of her, all of her hard work. It created buzz within our department and another county city department. You could feel a sense of pride and appreciation within our department. Tracy goes out to film this stuff. She engages with the staff, gets to know them, and truly takes it as a learning opportunity. I love this because it really shows you that someone in management truly cares and wants to learn what you do, hands-on. One day she returned to the office covered in mud from filming the survey footage. She was so excited to learn what the survey crew does and it had a, and had a blast. For these reasons, we're pleased to award Dragoo with the Commissioners' Award of Excellence for the month of two thousand, of August 2022.
All right.
I did have just a, I just.
Don't go far.
Come on up here.
Sometimes you're a lot, Tracy.
The back of their heads makes me mad.
I just did want to say a few words. Our social media site was primarily used for road closures and weather notifications, which, hey, that is an important thing, but our department is so much more than road closures and notifications. And a lot of the things we do are, on a day-to-day basis, are very complex. And as a whole, we are introverted analytical people. Mr. Dragoo does not fit that mold. I think that's fair. And that has really helped us get out there and get this out there. The viral video, I think at last count, did it have almost 200,000 views?
And this was the night concrete?
Uh, no, the viral, the viral TikTok was surveying monument corners with John Barry as the voice on it, and so.
But Bob Sager did follow us from that one.
From, from our night pour with the, the music, Bob Sager's music behind it. Bob Sager does follow our, our TikTok and Twitter accounts now, which is kind of cool. Anyway, Mr. Dragoo brings enthusiasm for this. I always say it's really important when managing an organization that you put things in the right places with people who are really excited about whatever task you gave them. And so, this is a task that Mr. Dragoo could have been sad about. She could have just continued to post road closures and weather notifications there, but that is not what she chose to do. And because of that, we have a lot more awareness in our community of what the engineering department does on a day-to-day basis and how we do it. And for that, I thank Mr. Dragoo.
Tracy, thank you so much for being here this morning. We deeply appreciate your efforts. I was impressed when I heard reverse engineering with TikTok because I really don't know what that is, but it sounds like it. Let me just say, all of us work for the citizens of Lancaster County, from the Commissioners to the elected officials to folks like you. Connecting with them and helping them understand the dynamics and the challenges we face is beneficial for everybody. And from the sounds of it, you've succeeded wildly in that area. So, on behalf of the board, we just appreciate your efforts.
Thank you.
So, I've been told that I have to say a speech. So, yeah, the social media thing was really intimidating, obviously, but it was very fun. And I wouldn't have had that success if it weren't for leadership in our department that were forward-thinking and gave people like me a platform to succeed. And, you know, it's the leadership class that you guys all put on and everything, it's just, I, I wouldn't be here without all those opportunities that I've been given at Lancaster County. So, thank you to everybody.
Sweet of you to, to recognize other people. I'm not sure who Matt is that was referred to in the, in the nomination. There's Matt. You're lying about it means a lot when leadership takes the time to learn what you do. And so, you took the time, and now everybody gets to learn exactly what, what we do.
Yeah, and it's, it's, that, that part of it's really fun because in, in my position, it's office manager, HR, and anytime like they come out to the, or HR comes out to where your work is, I would, huh, you know? So, it, it's really neat to see the guys really get involved, and they get excited because they see my excitement about it. And I did come back to the office covered in, I was wearing work clothes, covered in my, I was just happy. Like, it was so cool. So, it's neat to see everybody's excitement with it.
Well, congratulations. The honor is, is well-deserved.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Okay. Onto the.
This is number four, Consent Items. These are two business items that are expected to be adopted without dissent. Any individual item may be removed, may be removed for special discussion and consideration by a Commissioner or by any member of the public without prior notice. Unless there's an exception, these items will be approved as one with a single vote of the Board of Commissioners. These items approve of amendments to the following county contracts. C-21-745 with Dawn's Pioneer Uniforms for the annual supply of sheriff uniform, clothing, and accessories. C-22-493 with MMC Mechanical Contractors, Inc. for chiller replacement at the Youth Services Center. C-22-693 with MMC Mechanical Contractors for HVAC at DMV locations. C-20-470 with National Everything Wholesale, a network distributor for janitorial and sanitation supplies, equipment, and related services. C-21-799 with Vulcan Signs Vulcan Aluminum for traffic sign faces. Change Order Number One with ProSeal, Inc. for project overruns due to service conditions. Right-of-way contracts with the following Spanish Service Company Northwest 84th Street and West Branch Oak Road in amount of $631. Mark R. and Carol A. Anderson North 176th Street and Van Dorn Street in amount of $2,807. Grant awarded in amount of $3,960 from the Nebraska Crime Commission for the Office of Violence Prevention Grant Program. Received and placed on file, on file, the following reports Assessor, Clerk of this county clerk, and Records and Information Management for September 2000, offer of September 2022, and the County Sheriff and County Engineer for July through September 2022.
Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Second? And a motion is second to approve the consent items. Call the roll, please.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Next is number five, New Business. Five A is Appointment of Donald Scheinhaus to the Lancaster County Mental Health Crisis Advisory Committee for the term of October 12th, 2022 through May 31st, 2025.
I just wanted to say that he has been attending meetings. This is a Lincoln Police Officer, and he's been, brought some really good input into this, so I will move approval.
Second.
All right, we thank him for his service on this advisory committee. Call the roll, please.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. B, Recommendations from the Personnel Policy Board to amend County Rule 17-18, which is longevity, and amend County Rules 19-12 requirements as continuous service.
Good morning.
Good morning. Barb Macken, Tire Human Resources Director, 555 South 10th. Boy, I couldn't get that out today. So, this is just to clarify, I think, what the intent of this rule always was, which was to grandfather people who were not covered by the union contract into longevity pay that they were receiving. We recently had someone who moved from a non-union-covered position into one that was, and because this was not clear, we did grandfather them into that longevity pay, but we don't want to make any more of those exceptions, so we've just clarified the policy language that they're only grandfathered if they stay on the non-union side of the House, so to speak. So.
And both of those county rules are, apply to this same situation, correct?
No, that's just longevity. The next one on service date's a little bit different.
Okay.
So, unless there's questions about that, I'll talk about the service date one next.
Sure.
Okay. So, the service date one is really looking at, we started looking at what we were doing with our pregnant workers, the Pregnant Workers Fairness Act, which was adopted by the state in 2015. And what that really looked at, which became part of the Nebraska Fair Employment Practices Leave Act, was that we shouldn't really be adjusting the seniority date or someone's eligibility date for an increase based on them taking unpaid time related to pregnancy. So, having a baby, if they hadn't been here a year, they wouldn't have FMLA, and we were adjusting their seniority and then their eligibility date for their merit increases. So, we're making an adjustment to that, so we will no longer be adjusting that if they take longer than 30 days of unpaid time for that. And as long as we're doing that piece, we looked at FMLA, which is leave-protected time, and decided it's really the best practice to not adjust seniority or eligibility dates for anyone who's on an approved FMLA. We shouldn't be adjusting their, their merit or their seniority and, and things like that when they're out. So, that's the next piece. Any questions on that one? Okay.
And these are for represented and unrepresented employees?
Correct.
Okay. Are any other questions regarding new business item B?
I, I move, can we do one and two at the same time?
Yes.
I move approval of items B1 and B2.
Second.
All right, call the roll, please.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Five C is Resolution in Matter of Setting Waiting Periods for Benefits of Classified Employees.
You did the majority of these last week. This one's out of sync. It's just that now the employees in those classified positions will get their benefits the first of the month following hire, so.
Yay.
We just missed one in the grouping.
Move approval.
Second.
Yeah, we, this is, we, we've had a long discussion about this matter numerous times with Barb and her staff, and the thinking being that the delayed time for benefits was putting us at a competitive disadvantage in hiring new employees. Someone, someone with a family has to wait three months to get insurance. That could be detrimental to their consideration of working for us. So, now we've made an adjustment. We think it's equitable for the employees, for the taxpayers, and will allow us to get the best talent available when we're filling positions. I, I believe that was the tenor of the discussion, Barb.
Correct. You're absolutely right on target there. So, most employers carry your insurance through the end of the month in which you leave employment, and then most other employers pick it up the first of the month on which you start. So, what our folks had to do was figure out if it was, depending on timing, it was a minimum of two months, but could have been up to that three months at 90 days. So, they had to pick up Cobra. And if you think about, you know, our health insurance, just talking about ours, that's like $2,000 a month this employee has got to bridge, and that's for multiple months in a row to roll onto Cobra.
Nice.
So, now it really brings us into how we've seen the industry evolve, and most people will be able to leave their current job, accept our job, and they won't have to, to figure out how they bridge that health insurance gap, which has been, it has caused people to turn our jobs down. Actually, just got an email last week from a new employee who the timing is just not right on this change for, who said, "What am I supposed to do now?" And I'm like, "That's a really good question, but at least we are going in the right direction." So, you're right on with that.
And this is effective as soon as we vote?
This is effective with our new plan year, which starts January 1st. So, how it will be implemented is anyone who starts in November, actually, they, their benefits will be effective January 1st, but those December folks will also be January 1st because we have to change it when our insurance plan year changes. So, it's, it's still the right direction, but we do have that bit of a delay.
Okay. All right. All right, did you make the motion?
I think.
We've got a motion.
Motion, I think I second.
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Yocum?
Yes.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you for that explanation.
Five D is to be held. Next is number six, Public Comment. Those wishing to speak on items relating to county business, none on agenda may do so at this time.
All right, seeing none, if you could continue with the announcements, please.
The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will conduct a strategic planning session with Barry Dunn on Tuesday, October 11th, 2022, at 11:00 AM in Conference Room A 225, County Attorney's Office. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a staff meeting on Thursday, October 13th, 2022, at 8:30 AM in Room 112 of the County City Building. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a public hearing regarding the One and Six-Year Road and Bridge Improvement Program on Thursday, October 13th, 2022, at 6:30 PM in Room 112 of the County City Building. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold its next regular meeting on Tuesday, October 18th, 2022, at 9:00 AM, with a board deacquisition immediately following in Room 112 of the County City Building. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will hold a public hearing regarding Comprehensive Plan Amendment Number 22005 to amend the 2015 Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan to add the Comprehensive Watershed Master Plan on Tuesday, October 18th, 2022, at 9:00 AM in Room 112 of the County City Building. County Commissioners can reach at 402-441-7447 or commission at lancaster NE.gov. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting is broadcast live on Link TV. Link TV is available on Allo Channel 2 and Spectrum Channel 1300. For the rebroadcast schedule, visit lincoln NE.gov. Meetings are also streamed live on YouTube and Facebook. Link TV apps are available on Roku, Apple TV, and Amazon Fire TV. Next is number eight, Executive Session for Potential Litigation.
I move that we go into Executive Session for the purposes of potential litigation and to protect the public interest at 9:23 AM.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and second to go into Executive Session for the purpose of potential litigation and to protect the public interest at 9:23.
Flowerday?
Yes.
Vest?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Yocum?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
All right, we are now in Executive Session for the purposes of potential litigation and to protect the public interest. and to protect the public interest.
Call the roll please.
Yes.
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 Yes. We are adjourned, thank you.